Is her request for her to use her land done appropriately? And probably standing within the guidelines of this book overall, without making business decisions.
Well, I think if they didn't have a pre-existing history of both selling property, that it would be more clear.
It would be more clear. But they're both doing it, they have been doing it. So, I... Trying to tell someone how to use their land from a business point of view is a little tough for me.
I agree.
It's a little tough. We're always supposed to side with the... Has it worded in there in the front of the book? I forgot. We're supposed to decide with the best interest of the land owner. You remember that, guys? What's in the best interest of the land owner? If at all possible. So...
It's not an easy decision to come to.
It's not. Do we... Any other questions? Anybody? I know this is not easy, guys. It's not easy at all. I entertain some type of motion about this application, though. Does anybody have a motion you'd like to make?
I will make the motion that we accept and approve the application.
Do I have a second on that? Second by Roger. Now, the discussions on the motion.
Again, I feel like you're missing the... You know, you're holding to a view that's kind of very acceptable, very common, but somewhat narrow. And I agree, I feel like I'm on a very shaky ground saying this. But, you know, what makes a community? You know, is it just the application of certain laws? Or is how people treat each other? We can't really legislate that. You know, but that's where I'm coming from.
I understand it. We get it.
I agree with you 100% on it. But like I said, it's not up to us to put a hard into it in that respect.
It's kind of hard to say we make that decision for both parties. We can't do that.
Like you said, we have to go by what the book kind of tells us to do.
As close as we can to the book and follow the book and...
And try to be human about it.
We're trying to. I've always tried to do it ever since I've been on the board. I'm not 100% correct all the time, but as much as I can, I'm going to follow this book. And it upsets some people. We've had other people upset with me because I'm following the book. And I'm sure Ms. Allen was upset with me when she first come in here. She said... She says, "I could see it in her eyes. What do you mean, I gotta do this, 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 and this, all this?" She was not happy with us.
She did it.
She did it, though. But it's... And there's a... She's not the only one. We've had a lot of people upset with us. Because maybe prior boards didn't. They just took care of a few little things and they didn't read the book and follow it. But if it's in the book, this is what I... This keeps me out... This lets me sleep at night when I do this.
All right. Well, I'm just gonna ask you one more time and then I'm gonna rest my case. It says right in there, if it impacts the property value of neighboring properties, next. So how you gonna sleep with that?
I can sleep with that.
All right.
If she was opening a crack house... Not being sarcastic, being mean. It would be a definite deficit to that neighborhood. But come on, we're talking about a saleable item.
Yeah, both of them are selling the same item. And how is it going to be detrimental to the community? When you're both selling the product, you're increasing the possibility of sales, is what you're doing.
And the availability.
And availability of it, is the way I'm looking at it. But you're... And it's not detrimental to the community from just that point... That narrow point of view. That very narrow point of view.
It's a tough line. I feel it. I have someone opening a wedding venue one lot from mine. And there's nothing I can do about it because it's the use of their property. And we are in two different towns. Maybe it would be a different thing if we sat beside the board, but they're literally copying my exact business format.
In this town?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. Yes, ma'am?
Before you take your vote, I just want to make sure there aren't any conditions or anything else that you want to add to...
Add to the conditions for the motion?
Just want to make sure that we've...
I've thought about it. I've been thinking about that. It's not nothing new.
No, I just...
Because we make motions sometimes, we add conditions on the applicant. And I...
On my motion, I don't have conditions.
No, no, you don't. But I was thinking about it. And I thought about many new motions earlier, but I just don't think we have the right... I don't either. But I was thinking about something. I was going back to the green space. I was thinking about that, too. If there's something we can do back in the... Back on the site itself, back there, to improve... To do something, but it's not... She's only doing... It's only an area about half the size of this room is all she's addressing. That's it.
And may I just say, I'm all about making my property look nicer. I'm probably one of the nicest, cleanest places in town. So, I'm happy to do what you need me to do to make you feel better, even though it may not be necessary, but I will do it because I will plant flowers if you want flowers. I just want to run my business.
Green strip in as a condition?
It's not fair because...
So is that area to turn to trucks?
Yeah, she's got to have the area to turn to trucks. Plus whoever...
I think putting that in would impact the neighborhood.
It would impact the neighborhood more. It causes neighborhood people to be trying to get in there and back in on their lots. And that... All that other area was approved already. It's not part of this application, which is inappropriate. It's not... That wasn't done right from the start. I'll just say that.
Yeah, I don't understand what that is all about.
But it's what's in the book is what we're looking at. Whatever they approved before, they didn't follow this exact book.
Jesse, will you explain that tomorrow?
He's probably looked enough more than me. Green space is our very appropriate for this community. And green strips. But right now, in that area, that big lot there, you have nothing green, basically. You're all asphalt and concrete and buildings.
Yeah, and now I have all the green all around the front.
That's the front.
Exactly, but none of that used to be there.
I understand.
So I've done nothing but make it better and better.
Okay. But you got to understand what we're trying to say, too, is all that asphalt and concrete back there is all impervious contiguous and it makes...
Like they can do for the trucks.
It would've been... But now then, we can't do nothing about it because, like she brought up, it's about the trucks turning in there. And Andy understands that, too, now. If we had some spaces back there before she did all that...
Well, the trucks used to be sitting on Wiley Street. That's a definite improvement. Couldn't get through them.
They didn't like it.
It's going to be tough, guys. Now then, there's a motion on the floor from the planning board to approve her application, because it's been accepted as complete, to approve it as submitted. I'm saying that kind of right, aren't I? So, we need to vote on...
It's been seconded as well.
It's been seconded as well. And no one has made any amendments to it. No amendments that came from the floor. I mean, the board, not the floor, the board. So, board, we need to vote. So, all in favor of approving the application that's been submitted before us, please show your right hand... Raise your right hand. Opposed? One. Three, one. Motion's approved. Ms. Allen, your application is approved.
Thank you. I'll be in touch probably Monday with a letter, hopefully.
Thank you.
That was a hard one. That was very good. See what happens when he's... Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
I'll agree to disagree.
You guys sucked into it. What's that? What'd you say? You ain't going to be able to sleep as good as you think.
Oh, jeez, I'm going to bust my ass.
Yes, ma'am?
Two things. I would like to suggest moving Item B under New Business up to the front so that these lovely people don't have to sit through all the rest of it if they don't want to.
I'm enjoying it.
It's like the comedy show.
Wait till you come up, you're going to enjoy it now.
Then, number two. Aaron was on top of this last time. I didn't know if we wanted to vote to move Roger up for that item as...
Yes, that's what we want to do. I was going to say, we're moving him up for both of these.
We need him up for me.
I need a motion to move Roger up for Item New Business C and D. He's got to be done every time. We've got to move him up to voters. So, I'll second it. All in favor, show of hands. Three, nothing. No, you're in again, Roger. For all... For both of these. Zoning change for single property. This is the one I'm having an issue with. I'm going to tell you right away.
That's why I said you... Who's here for that?
William and...
I'm Eileen.
Eileen Harmon? Are you both here? Just you?
Eileen.
Oh, you're Eileen, huh?
I'm a Parsonsville resident, Edward Edwards. Robert's daughter.
Daughter? Oh, absolutely.
You know, I would like you to have your house there. That's my personal opinion. There's a problem. And how we're going to try to get around it, I don't know. We're going to have to talk to... We'll have to see what other people on the board is... I'll tell you what my problem is right up front. It's not you having a house on that property. It's that if we approve... I mean, you can get it by it without us, to tell you the truth, by putting it as a warrant article in front of the voters. And if they vote and approve it, they'll have it. As a planning board member, the problem is that it creates a precedent, right? That anybody who wants to change a use comes up with an ordinance. And all of a sudden, these land use ordinances really don't have any impact. I don't know if that's what you got.
I have a hard time with the whole situation about changing a land use altogether. Where did I put that?
Shoes are off on Colleen stuff.
Remember, I'll put it in here. I'm having a trouble with...
You understand what I'm saying?
I understand your point, yes, but, you know, it's residential all around us.
It is?
Yes.
That's the only section of the land that's industrial.
On one side is the gravel pit. And on the other side is a residence. And all across the street are all residences.
So you're right on a border?
She's right on the border, huh? Between the two?
You... One side of your property...
Abuts.
Abuts the gravel pit?
Yes.
And the other side abuts a residential area?
Yes. And then across the street is also all residential.
Makes it easier for us. Because is this drawing F right here?
Yes.
Okay. Because it's not laid out, it don't say... It don't tell me much, you know? It's... We got a drawing, but it don't tell us anything other than policy, Marston, to the state of Maine. The hatched out area, is that the one you're wanting to change?
I have to see what you're looking at. Let me see if I have a copy.
Because I got... That's not it there. You're the wrong one.
Do you want me to bring my map in for you guys?
And what I'm having a trouble with, too... My biggest concern is when I added up all the signatures you've got on these pages, it don't come to 81.
Well, this is... Can I explain what happened with the selectmen and the town clerk for the signatures? Okay, we were told to get 81 signatures. That would be 10%. So I submitted that list to the town clerk. And then, he was to verify if they were valid or not. But then, he didn't contact me back, letting me know that some didn't pass.
Oh, okay.
He presented it directly to the selectmen at their next meeting because that's what their rule tells them to do. Not to go back and contact the applicant and let us know that we had any problems. So I found that out by watching the selectmen meeting video. So once that happened, the next day, we went out and got 10 additional signatures that were valid. But when the town clerk went to check with legal if we could add 10 signatures to that, they said no.
I agree.
But they said what you could do was that the selectmen could submit the request to the... To make the change.
So they could submit it on...
On our behalf.
On your behalf. It could come through the selectmen. As a selectman's warrant.
That's correct. We approved it as...
So why are we even... Why does it even send to us that?
It actually comes to the planning board.
Do you got to look at pics while, Val, of the ordinance?
It don't make sense. It does not make sense to me at all.
It's in the book.
So, yes, our section is that 1.7 feet hatched out.
This is left in us field. And that's all residential.
Procedure. Any amendments? The planning board, by favorable majority, voted in entire regulation.
I don't have any problem doing it except for the precedent.
Right. I agree. I understand that.
At the back of the board.
Did you consider... I mean, I don't think you can do it, but I'm just going to ask you. Did you consider getting a variance from the ZBA, from the zoning board of appeals? That's what we're trying to do. Yeah, but we have to put this up for vote first. You have to put this... After we approved it, the signatures and sent it on, this is what they recommended.
I see, I'm reading it, too.
What you have to do is tell us year or year, we're going to put it up in front of the town meeting. Town meeting, that's different from the zoning board of appeals.
When is the next... When is the town meeting?
September.
September what?
10th.
10th. So we've only got 20-some days? Days of 17.
If necessary, and we haven't decided yet, we're going to put this. If it doesn't make the warrant at this particular time, we'll have a special town meeting to facilitate it. Because this is not part of the actual town meeting agenda.
I understand that. But what I'm reading this in here is, in order for us to do this, they're telling us, the planning board shall hold a public hearing on the proposal. Not will, shall means it's absolute. You have to do it. If it's written another word, but shall is absolute. Page 12. Page 12. Notice of the hearing must be posted and advertised in a newspaper or general circulation to Mr. Talia at least seven days prior to the hearing. So days of 17. So seven working days. Boy, it's going to make it almost. Have we got enough days to do this?
I don't think... I don't think it's okay.
I know Carol Doughty personally, the shopping guide, she'll make it happen.
Well, I'm just talking about how we got to do it.
Isn't that the paper you need to...
Okay, so this very good is if we get an ad in the shopper's guide by next Wednesday, you could have a meeting on the 31st, which would be seven days after that was published. And which would be a special meeting of the planning board.
Yeah. We'd have to call a special meeting then.
Let's see. Yeah, so within 30 days, so, yeah, so if you... If you so chose, you could, again, schedule a public hearing for the 31st, which is a Wednesday. And I could have an ad in the shopper's guide for next Wednesday, the 24th. And you could have a written... What is it? Within 30 days following the public hearing, the planning board shall make a written recommendation. The question there is, the 31 days, is that enough time to get it on the warrant and posted around town?
Is it? Mr. Selectman?
What do you mean, you want to get in for two weeks? Is that what you're talking about? What days do you have?
The question is, is if the planning board determines that at the public hearing that this is acceptable and they want to send it to the selectmen, if I turn around and send this to the office on September 1st, does that give enough...
Time.
Enough time for the clerk to post the warrant and keep up with that legal side of things for the town meeting?
That's what we... That's a question back to you guys.
Well, if we can't make the town meeting, make a special meeting.
Make a special meeting. Can you call a special meeting just for this?
We have some other items.
Oh, you probably will?
Yes.
Okay.
So, do you know roughly when your special town meeting is, Harvey?
Not as of yet, no.
It will be after the regular town meeting, though, right? Sometime later in September, maybe?
Possibly, yes.
I mean, if you waived and had it at your regularly scheduled meeting on the 21st...
21st of September?
Yep, that's your next scheduled planning board meeting, regularly scheduled. And you had your public hearing then, sent it to the selectmen, as long as they have enough time after the 21st to, you know... I don't know when their special town meeting is, so it's a little more difficult.
Let me ask you this. The board chair has the right to call a special planning board meeting.
You guys are already in session. You can make a motion to have a meeting.
I mean, we can call a special meeting before we have that meeting for a regular meeting on the 21st.
I'm saying you guys are meeting tonight. You can make a decision tonight whether you want to have an extra meeting.
Oh, yeah, well, you're addressing it different than I'm addressing it.
Right.
Both saying the same thing.
Different train track.
The calling of a special meeting implies that if something that comes up out of the blue, you guys are already meeting tonight. If you wanted to make a motion tonight, vote on it to have a special meeting, you can do that.
What's come up out of the blue is to try to make this... If we're going to do something about this, to have a public hearing in line so we can help meet the need of the town meeting. That come up out of the blue.
Right, but you guys are meeting, so you don't have to call it. You guys can vote on it.
Right, well, that's what... But same thing. Same thing.
So the big question is, having the public hearing on the 31st, is that going to meet the posting requirement for town meeting? I would think yes, but I'm not the clerk, so I can't give you an answer.
All it said is, the planning board shall hold a public hearing on the proposal. It has nothing to do with the town.
Yes, but if you're having a special meeting to make sure that it gets on the town meeting warrant, the town meeting warrant has to be posted so many days before the town meeting.
It's already posted. I don't think we can get it on... I was told that if we were going to get a new ordinance... A proposal for an ordinance in, had to be in by David Bauer, had to be in by the end of June. So this is going to... I think, you double-checked me, but I think this is going to require a special town meeting.
I think so. I believe that's what's going to happen.
So if you're going to need a special town meeting...
Why do we even want to worry about it, then, until...
Do you want to still have the special meeting? Or do you want to just have it at your regular...
Having a regular meeting. We'll start out with the public hearing that night. And then we'll go right... Not like we did tonight, then we'll go right into our regular meeting. Okay? It doesn't say we have to do a sidewalk or nothing here. It don't say nothing about a sidewalk, so I'm not going to recommend a sidewalk unless the board decides they want one. We'll just do a public hearing on it and go from there.
So, there's a few things... There's at least one other thing plus the time and date that we need to discuss.
Right.
Where is it?
The notice must contain the time, date, and place of the hearing and sufficient detail about the proposed changes as to give adequate notice of their content. It should have a very light sentence on page 12.
Right. The first paragraph, procedure number one, the amount of said fee... The last sentence, the amount of said fee to be determined by the planning board. That's what we need to determine because...
What's that? Where'd you read that at?
Procedure number one, the last sentence.
Last line of what?
First paragraph under B.
The amount of said fees due to be determined by the planning board.
And the sentence before that, a fee to cover the cost of the public hearings must be paid by the petitioners.
Must be paid by who?
The petitioners.
Right.
So technically, Eileen and William are the petitioners. The ones requesting this. There's no application for this. Normally, we charge a $25 application fee and $15 escrow. I need to know what fees they need to pay so that we can cover the public hearing costs and...
Meaning, we're looking for what? To cover electricity? Our heat that night if we got...
50 cents of the cost.
No, so the notice...
Oh, we got to be here. So it's like our little...
We got to be having it here.
So, the $15 escrow covers usually the public hearing advertisement costs, the butters notices, and then anything else that comes up. And then, if the 150 isn't completely used, we give the money back.
Okay.
Is that something that the board would be willing to...
Make a motion on?
Yes.
We'd have to motion that, yes.
And then, the other thing is, it only says public hearing notice. Do you want a butters notice sent? Or do you only want the public hearing notice?
No, we want butters be notified, too. Because why would we have a public hearing if the butters have... Say there's butter out there, they don't know. That ain't right. We need to let the butters...
Everybody gets a shopping guide.
Yeah, right.
So everything that gets thrown over, we're going to need motions to go through everything.
Right. Okay, first off, we need to make a motion on the fee.
I'll make a motion, the fee is set at $150.
In escrow.
In escrow.
Okay. I have a second, Roger. Now, in favor?
I want strict accounting of what was charged to these people.
Well, she will do whatever she does.
Okay, I mean, I don't know.
My time, your time.
And she's going to do everything.
81%.
Well, she'll... Her time has to be included, our time has to be included?
Normally, the escrow doesn't include your time and my time. It's the advertising cost, the butters notices, any kind of fees incurred for that process.
And I'll say, I agree with her now because we're having the meeting that night anyway. We would be here no matter what. A regular meeting. So our time...
Let's try to keep it low.
Let's try to keep it logical.
The advertisement costs, I will wait until we get a bill from your weekly shopper's guide, but it's been running $68 to $95 just for advertisements.
Wow. And then your butters, that's how much a letter?
A dollar something a letter. There's only like... Well, it's within 500 feet, so there could, you know...
Could be a dozen, two or 12.
The sand pit takes up quite a bit of that 500 feet, but on the rest of the usual shape, there could be a few, but I would say-
$150 should cover it.
Oh, yes.
Okay. That's the motion we have on the table, we have a second?
I second it.
All in favor, show a right hand, unanimous? Okay. Now, that moves out of the way. Now then, what was the next one we had a question about? About the public hearing?
Anytime before-
Are we going to make a motion to have a public hearing?
Yes, we're going to have to do that when she gets to talking.
I can't accept it, it would have to be during regular office hours.
It could be next meeting.
Yeah, so either mail in a check or, I will send an email to the office in the morning letting them know what you expect to get from you, and however you guys give the lift.
Okay, what was your next question, a motion?
The next question was, scheduling a public hearing.
Scheduled a public hearing.
Amazing.
It would be our next meeting date, which would be September 1st. September 21st.
Yep.
At 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
Which is normal for us. I need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
Saban makes a motion, second?
Second.
Roger, all in favor, unanimous?
Did you want a sidewalk?
No.
No sidewalk, can we have a motion?
Why not?
Unless you guys want it, if you guys want it, I'm okay, I'm okay with it.
I mean-
All we're doing is changing, uh-
What we're doing is pretty significant, you know, I mean, I'd like to see it done, but I think we've got to be very cautious as we proceed.
Okay, okay. Motion to have a sidewalk?
I'll make it.
Wait a minute, just a minute, what dates have you got that Desiree?
The Saturday directly before that meeting, excuse me, is September 17th.
September 17th, that's the motion you need to put down. At 9 o'clock?
Up to you guys.
At 9 o'clock. Can you, am I making it?
Yeah.
Because it's not too early.
I'm good.
Andy, you good?
I think so.
Okay.
I'll grab you.
Okay, I need a motion. Motion?
Again, you make the motion.
Andy, make a motion.
Yeah, I'm motioning we have a sidewalk on, on September 17th at 9 o'clock.
Okay.
I second.
Second by Saban, all in favor, unanimous?
Um, because it doesn't say in the orders to send out a butters' notices, I would like a motion telling me to do that, please.
Until you do it. I'll make that motion that we ask the executive secretary to send out notice, letters of notice to all of butters to this property at, oh man.
R129.
R129.
I second.
Second by Saban, all in favor, unanimous?
Are we through with motions?
I think that covers-
I'm getting motion sickness.
Um, while we're on this subject, the reason this has been such a whirl around is that there was no permit issue to start with.
For?
For what we're doing right now.
Well, there's no application.
And therefore, all we did was get the signatures done, but there was no permit.
What do you mean permit, Harvey, I'm lost.
Well, permit to rezone. Whatever we did tonight should be precedent to whatever we do for rezones-
In future.
In the future.
Because I think we did it quite in detail in our motions tonight, as far as the planning board.
Right.
Our part.
So, if that's the case, they should come to the planning board and then go back to the town clerk.
Well, that's not what it says, if you read our book.
Okay, but I mean, this has been flip-flopping around because there has been no permit, no place to put it.
It's got to be, amendment initiated by petition, it says must be, you don't have no option, must be presented to the town clerk and board of selectmen who shall then transmit them to the planning board. So, she's got to come to you guys first, it's got to be a petition, come to you guys, just like this was done, and then you guys forward it to us to act on it.
And then we send it back.
And then we send it back.
And then we send it back.
Yes.
So, there's two options, there's a request of the planning board in the subsequent favor of the majority of the board, or the written petition with the signatures.
Right.
No, we need the written petition, that's why, we need to stay with that.
But it's any of it, it's either or.
Huh?
On the ordinance, it's either or. A or B.
So, if they, hypothetically, if they had just written a letter asking the planning board to look at this, that would have been sufficient instead of going for the petition with the signatures?
The flip side of that is, if we say no to you, you still have the option of going to the town, you understand?
Right.
So, I, you know, I don't think, I don't know what weight our opinion has, it's based on, you got 81 signatures on that thing, if you get all your people to show up, you're going to pass your-
You're going to get voted in anyway.
That's the truth, I'm telling you the truth. Can I ask you a couple of questions though?
Sure, that's why I'm here.
Um, when you bought this property, were you aware of the zoning?
Yes, but we were also told by the previous owner and the real estate agent that the town was in favor of changing the zoning, and that he was already actively pursuing the information to do that, the previous owner.
Go find him and shoot him.
This is the first we've heard of this.
I know, and if I can just make a comment, there's a major problem with communication as far as to, no one has contacted me hardly at all about anything. The only way I've found out anything about what process is going on and what's happening is by watching the videos of the select meeting and just happening to pick up uninformation in the meetings. That's why I'm here tonight, because I saw last week, and, you know, and Debbie was nice enough to send me an email saying-
We wouldn't contact you because we would not know nothing about it.
I know, but the process itself is the fact that you send your signatures to the town clerk, and then you get no reply if they're good or not. They automatically have to pass it on, even though they know it's not valid, but they can't come back and tell me that it's not valid.
I hear what you're saying, yeah.
You know, so, maybe in the future, that piece came in adjusted with the selectmen, I don't know.
Better communication.
Well, just the fact to allow you to go and amend your signatures if needed, because I had no idea that some of them weren't valid-
Right.
-until I watched the meeting, and that's where I found out from David's comments that some of them didn't pass.
Well, you need to find, get a, get the page from our clerk, I mean, from our executive secretary if you could, and have her give you page 12 out of our book, especially out of B. Section 10, Amendment B, Procedure, because it tells you very much in detail your, what's got to be done.
And we keep getting bits and pieces, but once we did the signatures and submitted them with the drawing and the information, that was the, like, end of communication.
Well, if we give you a copy of this book, then this page, you'll know in detail because it talks about the ordinance, it talks about the town selectmen, and it talks about us, the planning board, she's going to give you that, it's all on the same page.
Can I comment on your comment, Matt? Just having that piece of paper isn't going to change the quality of communication.
And we already have this piece of paper, it doesn't really help you explain what you really need to do. I mean, I've had multiple conversations with you, you know, about what's our next step, what do we do?
You're doing way better than the previous owner, because he started this twice. He started trying to do it twice.
Okay.
But-
I understand, we're going to try to help you where we can.
Sure.
Okay, Desiree.
This is something to keep in mind as you guys work through editing and updating the ordinances.
Yes, exactly. It's just, just-
It's just a challenge.
It's a challenge, this book is, this book is a challenge.
Oh, I'm sure.
Because the way it's written, put together, I put it, not the way it's written, the way it's put together.
How big is your lot?
1.73.
That's a good size, lot.
It used to be the rest stop.
Yeah, I know the place, it's got a pump in there, we used to get our water.
Oh, it's still there, we're going to fix it.
Okay, so that's where we're at.
We'll follow it.
So, we have a site visit set up, Desiree, Desiree, site visit set, public hearing set, and then we will make a dis-
I will be sending out a butters' notices, and Ms. Harmon will be sending a check for the $150 escrow.
Yes, and whatever's not used, you'll send it back, come on.
Right.
Okay.
Do we need to be at the sidewalk?
Yes.
You don't need to be.
You need to be, if one of you was there, it'd be just fine.
What you should do is if you, you're planning to build there, correct?
Right.
Correct. Stakeout where you want the building, so they have an idea of what-
For the building's going to sit on your lot.
Too many trees, Stephen.
Yeah, it's totally wooded, solid.
Just a couple posts, you know, just so they have an idea.
Yeah, flag some trees.
Just flag some trees so they have an idea of what they're-
Yeah, where we're looking at, okay?
Just to keep in mind, we live three hours away, so I'm happy to come down when we need to, I just need a little advance notice to be able to get here.
Okay, there is that one's done, yeah. Okay.
And don't, you know, you've got to be vocal here, okay? So, if you don't give what you want, I'm here.
And speak up, and tell us.
I just, you know, I'm trying to follow the rules, boys.
Well, you can follow, you still-
You still got to speak up.
I'm kidding.
Okay. Site plan, that's done. Now, we're going back to D. Let's go to D next. Site plan review, Karen Flannery and Robert-
Spielvogel.
Spielvogel, Mount U14, Lot 001, currently propose use seasonal count bathroom addition with utilities. And that package is in our book and our, well, yes, you do have it somewhere.
Excuse me, can I make one comment? The way it's written, there's not going to be an additional bathroom, it's going to, we haven't, the existing bathroom.
It's in there, it's in there.
Well, propose use seasonal count, it's going to two bedrooms and one bath.
Yes.
So, you're not putting another bathroom on it.
No, no.
But you're putting on enough space to make another additional bedroom.
No, no.
Well, you're adding something back here.
We're getting rid of the bathroom that we currently have and adding, putting the new bathroom in the addition.
The way it's drawn, it looks to me like you're putting on a new bathroom.
Yes, we are, we're putting on a new bathroom, the existing bathroom becomes a hallway.
We're getting it through.
Because it's about the size of a hallway.
Let me get to that page.
Okay.
Here it is. This is the one I like to look at, because it shows it. But we need to look at the whole package, guys. While you're looking at the package, I've already looked at it, I've made a lot of notes, so that's going to allow me to run through the bathroom while you guys are looking.
I'm looking at the bathroom.
Okay, 177 Randall Lake Road, let me try to place that in my mind. Do you fit?
Well, I know that road really well, but one end of it, I've got a little ride all the way at the end that goes up the hill.
Well, it's the end, yep.
Chipmunk lane.
Yep.
And then where are you guys in reference to the-
We're the first camp on the pond.
After you come in.
Back in the dam, yeah, we're the first one there, sort of a mustardy colored one, yep.
Okay.
You can't, you can't, you can't see it from the road. There's a lot of trees on it.
Yeah, we don't like your neighbor.
Who's that?
The one that built, bought all the property around there.
He might need it, he don't like it.
No, because he bought the dam and won't let us take our dogs there anymore.
Michael Wong, yeah, he's-
Oh, yeah, yeah. We, you know, we used to, because I live on Maplegrass, so I live, so where the lake is, I'm pretty much like straight across.
Where are you guys?
Um, River and Cold, they're called.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, 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 we know, you know. Yeah, yeah, with River, with River, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's, yeah.
Well, you've got enough drawings here, so you can all that.
Now, my feet's short. There's not enough drawings for that.
That's all you need to get the application through, some nice drawings.
To water.
I know, I said I'm going to watch this more than you can. I know.
It's one of those, you know, the key signs of the-
They're in the shorelands, so.
I know.
So, trying to find, who's the water?
That's, that's, that's a good thing you're telling me, because I don't know him personally, or-
So, I mean, it's wrong if it's 12 by 13, you know, foot.
Can you guys figure out from this how big your proposed action is?
It's like 12 by 13 and a half.
12 by?
13 and a half right here.
You guys are on the agenda, you have the right to be-
roadside facing, I can't tell where the water is.
You will be asked to, yeah, we are, no, do not, no.
It's going to be all right, because it's-
Not before, not before we get hurt, okay?
No.
Thank you.
We're going to worry about the whole lot.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do I do another slate?
So, yeah, so we're the first camp, we're on the mustardy colored one, it's going along, yeah, yeah, yeah. Nice place down there, you know, it's a beautiful spot, and it's quiet.
Yeah, yeah.
Phew, fun.
It is quiet.
Okay. Move forward now. Is everybody here?
There's a lot of drawings in here. There's a lot of drawings. You have to, you see that in there, like, around this?
Oh, yeah.
Like, I've got drawings.
What's this? All right, this is, this is a good one, because it shows where they're going to actually add to it.
Right, on the roadside of it.
Yeah. And that, you know, you can tell by what they've got here, just by the drawings, what's really going on, other than the words.
You can tell.
Yes.
That's why we got him.
That's why we got him.
Okay.
We don't get it, we ask you to-
Now then, uh, do you happen to have a copy of the, of the form where all of the things laid out, that's what we expect you to give to us?
Yeah, the A through-
A through Y.
You should have got, it should be in your packet.
I know it, but-
Just make sure you got it.
Whenever I went through this-
Yeah.
I found some things, in my opinion, that are not in the packet.
Oh, okay.
Or are not laid out like they should be laid out, let's put it that way.
Okay.
You may have put something in-
Okay.
But it's not, let's go down, the first one I've got, I've got a question on G.
G, the site plan survey?
Location and size of any existing sewer, water mains, culverts, drains that was served, they call it development on your property, or their owner off the property, along with the direction of existing surface water-
Right.
-drainage. We need to know all that, which way your surface water's going to drain off your site, if you've got any culverts in there, like, near your driveway.
Nope, nope, nope.
Uh, water main, where's your water main coming in, or you got a well?
We got a well, the well is marked on there.
Okay, but how's the well, where's the line go from the well to the house?
Oh, okay, I can draw that in here right now.
Yeah, you can draw that in.
Straight to the house.
Okay, then let's go down to H, the very next one, H.
Okay, let me just, let me make note-
Okay.
-of what you want me to do, and do you want me to do it tonight, or do you want me to resubmit?
No, you're going to, you'll probably resubmit.
Resubmit, okay.
What's your mission, Randall Lake Road?
Okay, okay, um-
H, you don't, I mean, you don't have nothing on, location and names and present widths of existing streets that are out through there. How wide are your streets?
There's only one-
So, how wide is it?
Oh, okay.
The word is your, uh-
It doesn't show on here?
No, it doesn't.
Randall last road.
Nope, I looked, I looked.
It's a 10-rod road, but that's okay.
That don't mean, that don't tell me nothing, you need, you need to go out there and say, put the tape, this is how wide it is.
Okay.
The lot is 12 feet.
Okay.
Location, dimensions of existing driveways, streets, parking, and loading areas, walkways on the site, okay. Dimensions on your driveway, there's no dimensions on your driveway.
Okay.
There's, you got one listed.
It's listed as a gravel drive.
Well, if it's a gravel drive, it's a driveway.
Well, okay.
You got to get into your parking somehow.
Well, I've got this scale here, so you want me to just write it on?
Write it on there.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
Location of intersecting roads or driveways within 200 feet of your property, your neighbors, is there any neighbors within 200 feet of you?
Yeah.
So, you're going to have to show their driveways on there too.
I don't think your neighbors within 200 feet of you.
What's, I'm saying, it's 200 feet of the site, but 200 feet of the site.
How big is your lot?
From the driveway.
Yeah, no, it's not what it says here.
No, no, yeah.
Within or 200 feet of site, it don't say driveway.
So, okay.
And then I, I mean, L, JKL, location of open drainage, wetlands or standing of trees, other important natural features.
Okay, so there's-
Anything that's natural on your site, you should show it on your drawing.
You won't see anything, because it's all trees.
Okay.
I can't, do a separate one, and do trees all around?
No, no, just do like that, and say-
Just do around, okay.
And just say stand of trees, you don't have to draw all the trees on it, just do a big, squiggly area.
Yeah, 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 okay.
We Google Map for it? We Google Map for it?
Huh?
Google Map?
Yeah, Google Map will help you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good. In fact, Ms. Allen used Google Maps, she did a good job with that.
Yeah, okay.
Location and dimensions of any existing easements and 10 copies of existing covenants or deed restrictions, if there's anything.
No, no deed restrictions, no easements.
Okay, just, and then put that down and write, no deed restrictions and no easements.
Or you can just write applicable, right?
No, I wanna see that.
Yeah, I see, that's, okay.
That one I wanna see, because some of them I skipped over if you look, I'm going down. Now, you guys might want some more stuff, other than just me. Proposed development activity, down here, this is not a development activity.
Right.
So anything starting with O through the bottom, unless you guys wanna see something, I don't know if we need to do that because it's existing property, it's an existing building, and all she's doing is renovations doing it.
Right.
Or they are doing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the only possible concern with this, and it's not really a concern, it's a shoreline district, which is, they're building on the side that's already towards the road.
Towards the road, away from the shoreline.
And it's less than our one-time allotment of 30%.
5%.
And right, it's 20%.
Well, the CEO would tell us that, when he goes at it. Now, are they setback far enough, the house setback from the high watermark?
They're up on a hill, you guys are gonna have to look at it at site walk.
Okay.
And see the situation.
So you don't, it may not be exactly setback from the high water line, but if they're up here, then those will make up some difference, they could be a little closer.
Right.
Okay, that's what you're saying, okay.
Yeah.
All right. You need to be at that site walk with us, please, sir. Randall Lake Road, okay, this is theirs. Additional property, you've gotten another property besides your one.
On the other side of the road.
On the other side of the road, okay. You got your warranty deed in here. I like your drawings about the addition.
Thank you.
I like drawings more than I like words.
I get, I get that, okay.
Coming out of civil engineering, it makes a, drawings tell me a lot more.
Right.
Now then, on page, what is this here? Why did I have, oh, the setbacks. On this one here, this drawing here.
Yeah.
Is put out by site lines.
Yes.
They don't show your setbacks from your property line to the, your house. How far, what's the distance between the property line and the house here and the backside where it's really close, what's the distance from the property line to the house?
Okay, all right. I have this scale on, but I'll put it on.
There has to be setbacks, and we, you need to write those numbers in there.
Okay.
And the front too, the setback for the front.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the big drawings one I really like, because on this one, it'd be a lot better.
I give it that, so we'll do it on that one, I've got the scale down and.
Now then.
Cover it in.
Yeah, which way, no, which way is a leach field in reference to your septic? Is it going towards, is the field going towards the house, towards the east, west?
It's an existing septic, so it's a.
It's gotta have a leach field.
It's a cesspool.
It's a cesspool?
Mm-hmm.
That's not a septic.
It's a working cesspool.
It's a working cesspool, whoa, I don't even like to hear that word.
I had to just draw the line.
I know, I know.
It just goes down.
Down, it's like going out, right?
It just goes down?
That could be a requirement in H H 200.
What's that?
A septic system.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, we can't, we just, we don't know that we can retro.
No. Changing a bathroom, we gotta make sure that, well, that, septic systems are set up for bedrooms anyway.
They're set up for bedrooms.
So it's those two bedrooms and one bath, it's not.
Nothing changed.
No.
Well, yeah, we're actually gonna be reducing the amount of water because we're gonna get very low flow.
Okay.
And also the dishwasher now. I'm the dishwasher.
Okay, that's the things that we need for you to add and bring back to us, and bring it back to your whole package again with these additional things in it, if you would, please.
Okay, so you redo the whole pack?
Yeah, redo the whole pack and add all this into it.
Okay.
Because I'm sure it's just the same. So that's all we need, and we'll be able to, next time, we'll be able to look at your package, if it's complete, we'll have the, we're gonna have our site visit before then, we'll also have our public hearing that night too, that same night as a, as a meeting.
Okay, so, um.
Are we gonna, we haven't scheduled hers though, have we?
No.
So, so time up, just a second.
I'm trying, I'm looking what time it is.
I understand, Alan, I wanna go home too.
All right.
I have G, H, J, K, and N. Did I miss anything, or those?
I think there's a main one.
Okay, those five, and we're sure that those are the five we need. Can we have a motion that those are the five that we want to see for next time?
Let me make, let me, let's see. G, H, J.
L, it's one, yeah.
G, H, J, K, L.
L.
N.
N, so six.
There's six of them.
Six of them, okay.
I need a motion.
M is in Mary, correct?
Yes.
Okay. No, N. N is in Nancy.
We have a motion.
I have a motion that it's incomplete.
And, and we need to add the six items into the new package.
We need six items added to the new package.
Add to the new package when they submit it.
Nice second.
And Roger seconds it. All in favor, unanimous.
All right.
We gotta schedule a site walk.
So, I do, I did receive an email this afternoon from the Butter, and I didn't know if you wanted to make sure, read it and address it, I'm sorry, I didn't print it out, and I can't print it out right now. Do you wanna address?
Let them come in, let the Butter come and address it at our public, our public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wanna make sure. So, site walk, we have one on 17th at 9:00.
That one, that's what, how far away is this from that one we're having?
Half an hour.
Half an hour.
So, 10 o'clock?
Maybe it's a little more than half an hour. From out on 25, they gotta go Randall Lake Road.
Yeah, if you go up, go up Allen 160, go down Maple Crest, Henderson, Randall Lake, it's, oh, 25 minutes, maybe, maybe.
You could catch the other end of Randall Lake.
You could, depends on your vehicle.
Come on, we're just about to go. I'll be there.
How about?
That's my safari book.
Board, how about 10 o'clock on the 17th?
Yeah.
17th is Saturday?
It's a Saturday.
That's for the site.
We do all our site visits on Saturdays, because some of these guys still work. So we, Saturday at 10, on 17th at 10 o'clock, motion?
I make the motion.
Second? Second by Andy, all in favor, unanimous. And then we'll have our public hearing for them right after we do the other one, same night on 20.
First.
21st.
Okay.
We'll go back-to-back public hearings like we've been doing.
Make your motion.
We gotta have a motion.
So is, I'm sorry, can I, is this, so we're, there'll be a public hearing about our, okay.
It's standard.
It's standard practice.
Okay.
That way your Butter's, like she's mentioned, there's a letter from some of Butter, that person can be here at that public hearing and address their letter.
Okay, move to have a public hearing, what was the date, September 21st?
First.
Following the.
Other hearing.
The other hearing for the.
Following the first hearing.
Second.
Second. Second by Saban, all in favor, unanimous.
Bring your position.
Okay, thank you, guys. That's done.
Thank you.
Well, the next one, I'm out of anyway, so I'm gonna go take this.
I wanna be here to hear it.
Where are you going?
I won't be gone that long.
Okay. No, I just wanted you to, I just leave it.
Okay.
All right, what's up next? I think we jump back up to our budget process and submission, A.
Why don't we do the other one first, because it's kinda more, I mean, it doesn't matter that much, but it's kinda more loaded.
Oh, no.
I agree, it's our town.
I think we get this kind of credit.
I think we get that up.
Okay.
I thought we gotta do is just ask her if she got it all under control, and she got her, we need a, she wants to, she needs to be submitted for the budget.
Do we need anything? We need, if your board used to buy one, but we weren't gonna buy a camera, that'd never happen.
It's supposed to happen, but the board is slated. Are you guys still gonna buy a video system for India?
We're all, we've got one on order.
Okay, yeah, I knew they was going to. So you got one ordered?